For the acceptance of the grant.
Correct.
So that is the only topic of discussion for the that public hearing, I guess. So the point of tonight's sharing is to talk about particularly a part of the public hearing is to talk about what we are accepting and how we intend to spend those to
Yes. I guess so, yeah. Okay, so there's two pieces. There's S R two monies. There's S R two monies, which is $232,937 and change. And A R P S R, S R three monies, $523,145. So roughly $756,000 and change for the monies that we've received. There's a lot of information on how that money can be spent, but the biggest thing has to be related to COVID-19. 20% of the A R P S R has to go towards learning loss. So the projects, and we've been talking about this for a while. The projects we've been, we've actually presented, sent some of this to the state because it's, we have to get kind of pre-approval, then we put it into the grant management system for just some of the projects for construction projects. It's like pre-approved, there's like a four-step project for that, process for that. So anyway, some of the areas we have looked at is a guided study, student support position that would address learning loss directly. B C B A additional services just for any, anyone that's needing some additional, more like what is that? Yeah, like more like mental health. Yeah, yeah, services. Amplify Science is a science curriculum that they purchased for the middle school because there were some deficiencies in the middle school science curriculum and demonstrated success working with our teachers primarily at the elementary school, but I think it's going to branch into the elementary, middle school. But again, looking at the data to try to identify some of that learning loss. So those are, and then some after-school programming we're looking at. So those are areas that we've identified that we could spend this money. And then the biggest piece though is the high school HVAC system. So I mean, after we're looking at the learning loss, we probably have about $600,000 to put towards our high school HVAC system, which is again a project we've been talking about for many years. We have presented that to the state. We've worked, we've been working with an engineer. So again, we're still going through all those approvals. And we talked about that because we're pretty sure this grant money isn't going to cover that whole project. But and I'll be presenting some information later, like some about trust fund balances. We'd also talked about possibly, we might have to go to the voters next spring for some additional monies for that. Anyway, so that's the areas we've identified. If anyone has any questions. Yeah. Well, the S R two monies run from April 2021, but you know, we really didn't get the funds till later in the spring till September 2023. And the other S R funds run from May 2021 to September 2024. So I know a lot of schools are looking at some, you know, projects like the HVAC systems and upgrading that. You know, for us, it's, for us, it's a lot of money. And it's great. Yeah. Let's make a big dent in it. Yeah, yeah. To accept those S R funds.
We don't have to make any votes on whether to want to spend our
No, it's really to accept the monies. I mean, again, there's still a lot of steps to go through with the state to get everything approved, but these are just some of the things we're looking at based on the guidelines we've received. Nope. I mean, once we have approval to accept the funds, yeah, and it's in the state system, we can start spending it. Once we get final approval from them on all of our projects that we put in.
I mean, the approval does come from the state.
Yeah. But this is really just to accept those monies.
I think I have to post, you know, I have to comment on the acceptance of S R funds. Public comment with respect to the public hearing on accepting S R funds. Seeing none, I guess I'll put the motion to report to the motion to accept and extend the S R two and all of the favor to the five by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'm looking very good. I will also, I guess, except looking to the very, the hearing on S R. Is there, I guess we'll call it where the regular discussion about those.
I had nothing. I'll make a motion to approve the minute of September 22nd, 2021 as presented.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion on that? All of the favor to the five, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. And questions? Okay, so I'm looking very first up is correspondence. So I did receive a correspondence, I think, and the did the whole board receive emails or?
No, just this one.
Okay, that's the only, that's, I just received that.
Correct.
So I guess I can explain what that is. I received a letter from select board in the town of Woodstock. I think as a few folks know, or most, most of the board know, there was a discussion item on the agenda of Woodstock. So I'm leaning a few weeks back. And there was a pretty significant turnout and response. One of the items was the quality of school and the quality of education and if there have been viable options for education of Woodstock students, I think largely the people showed up in support of the school. Obviously, there was also some motion and a lot of people concerned about the school's current testing and online ranking systems. But I think that largely the community was interested in ways that we could make the school a better place. So I think that's a very viable concern. So what the board suggested, I think, in my opinion, I think is I guess I'll, we'll call my opinion, but I, the suggestion would potentially have maybe a quarterly report coming from the school board or from the district to the town and to the, I don't know if that necessarily is the direct, to the what they're suggesting is the I guess it's a shared community. So basically a quarterly update on what the school is doing to and what initiative would be taken to get us to a better place in the nation and in the district and even I think that's something that's certainly new. I know there's a lot of stuff that's been done. I think not a lot of people know about the stuff that's been done. So I think it actually may be helpful to have more people in the community understand, you know, the work that's being done in the district, stuff that administration and teachers are doing to help the students perform their testing. And to just get more out of the, you know, get more out of their, so I guess by way of discussion on that, my, my thought is, I see that as a win-win. I think it's more of a maybe add book, the work being done in the district. People understand, you know, where their, where their tax dollars are going and what the district's doing to send my library and give the results to the kids. And it sounded like briefly that that seems like it's something that
No, I think it's a great idea. It's very good.
So I think we, maybe we can make that into another item or another meeting where we can make this up further, you know, the type of things that maybe we would like to put in that. In that, I know that the, who already does some of the newsletter type stuff, but that's usually a little bit more sort of vague.
Right, right.
You know, what's going on in the school as opposed to more reading about what, how, what we're doing.
And possibly just up to parents, this component we want to send to all
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, the suggestion, I think, for the board is to, to the community, you know, why.
Something like that could be sent to both boards, like in the two thousand, literally, okay, the last half of the meeting.
Yeah, no, I think the idea is the more information that's out there, the better.
Agreed.
And just more information. I think there's a lot of a lot of folks that aren't, especially if they don't have a kid in the district, they don't really have a grasp on what we're doing. They see the numbers that are we're talking about online, you know, like in the online. So I think it would be helpful to let them see from the, from the district, what's being done about it. But let's, I guess, I guess let's put that on the actual agenda and we can discuss. And if it is you know, what on, a way to we get more information for fun. I don't really know, you know, what I went up to, but I'll just say we got a a email from Mr. Sharon Paul pressing some concerns about and asking some personal information about what's being done about little school and elementary school and high school science testing performance level. And I believe you administration responded to that. Did you get that response from?
I did.
And certainly you can make that available to the owners, if you're sending me the response to that. The only other
You got the Department of Educational Services letter?
Oh, yeah, sorry. We received a letter from the Department of basically
The piping project?
Yeah, confirming completion of the piping project and waiting for any fines that we associated with people who received that. I think that closes up that chapter of the some of these things. And it's just happy to see that they were cutting us some slack there. And then we got one, three of them, that question, I don't know if that was necessarily from a fourth thought.
No. I just, just inside your packet every once in a while, I, the timing is right and I think we can send out a North Country Educational Services newsletter that they send out. It's interesting to see different things, activities that they're doing.
Yeah.
Kids and staff, professional development as well. That's all I had for this time. Okay, well, I left my notes in my office, but okay. Yeah, the auditors are here, so day two of three, so that's kind of where I'm at right now. But yeah, anyway, the manifest for this week and are going around. Before I get, in your blue folders, but before I get to that, yeah, I'll do that now. In your blue folders is the financial summaries from the 2020, 21 school year, which is again what the auditors are here looking at right now. And I can go through this with you. I, it's the same format that I, I present every year, the end of year results. So I do a little bit, so the first first report I give you, and this is the general fund financial recap of where we ended the year, revenues and expenditures versus budget, which yields overall, we had a unassigned fund balance in the general fund of about $900,000. And I, and I'll hit some of the major items. So we look at our revenues and our expenditures. When we look at our revenues, about 90% of our revenues come from Lincoln and Woodstock, the taxpayers. We do get, and this is in the general fund, we do get other revenues, like we get some state aid, special ed or catastrophic aid. We get some vocational transportation aid. We get some other federal monies like Federal Forest Reserve monies and Medicaid. We do get grant money, but again, that's not in the general fund. So any federal grant monies and we probably get two to about $300,000 a year in just entitlement funds like Title I, Title II, IDEA, those, those types of grants. As you know, we're getting more federal monies, but that's all due to COVID. So, but those are accounted for separately. So this is really just the general fund. But again, we look at all of our revenues. And then we look at our expenditures. And I was at a state meeting on Friday and I would say everyone's looks like this. You know, it was, it was, last year we were in school full session. And if you remember the year before, we had quite a surplus too. Because we shut down at the end of the year, so we didn't have some programs. Last year we had some limited programs, you know, like sports, we had sports, but they were limited. The seasons were a little shorter. So we save money in transportation. We save money in referees. We had one staffing change last year. We, we reduced, if you remember, we reduced a full-time equivalent. It was a halftime health and halftime adapt person. So we did drop full-time equivalent position last year. We had some other staffing changes. We had a retirement, so we had some staffing changes. So you have someone new coming in, maybe at a different rate, different benefits. So again, that's when you look in on our salaries and benefits, those are the reasons why those are all positive numbers, good. It's, it's better than budget when you look at the expenditures. We had an out-of-district placement in last year's budget. Well, that person moved out of town, so we didn't have to use that money. We had, you know, some of the money we used, we did get some COVID money last year, the CARES Act. So when we looked at like some of our technology and some of our equipment and things like that, we used, we were able to use some of the CARES Act money to buy some of the, you know, some Chromebooks and, and faucets for our buildings and, you know, things like that. We saved some money in some equipment areas. We didn't really, we kind of limited any furniture expenditures last year. Voc ed tuition, we didn't have kids go to the CTE centers last year because of COVID, so we didn't have that, you know. So again, it was basically a, yes, we were in full session, but we had some limited programming. Just trying to pick out some of the big things. Yeah, transportation again was, was, we had some savings there because we didn't have sports, we didn't have after-school programs, we didn't have kids going to the CTE or field trip. So things like that. So, and in the end, you know, so that's why we ended up with $900,000 in fund balance. $184,000 of that, as you can see up there. We had, we closed, and again, this is just a, an accounting thing, but it all ends up in our fund balance at the end of the year. We had to close a trust fund and it lapses into our surplus. But if, so if you see that line, 184,000, but then you take away from that 900,000, that 184,000, those are less, what was voted because it went back in to the capital reserve. So that was kind of a good chunk of that. But anyway, so in the end, and then at our last meeting, you guys had voted, we have the, we can retain up to two and a half percent. So we voted to retain 150,000. So what's going back to the towns of Lincoln and Woodstock is 473,627. That goes back to them based on our portionment formula. And when they, during the tax rate setting, we don't, we don't actually cut them a check, but it goes back and it gets into the tax rate setting process. So again, you know, two years in a row, but again, I was at the state meeting and everyone's
It makes sense.
And what, what's hard is, you know, those people made comments like, but this isn't what our new budget's going to look like. You know?
We're still going to need all those things coming up coming year.
Yeah.
That we didn't use.
Right, right. But we are sending that money back, so that will help with the tax rate.
We're not going to save another, what was it, in 57,000?
Right.
We're actually going to have to bust them this way.
Right, right. We are going to the CTE meeting. Yeah, yep. So so then the next sheet I have is just a food service fund summary, and there's many, many years on there. So food service this year was again, a different year. If you look at the actual 2020, 21, we actually had, I mean, we usually, our, our food service cannot stand on it on its own legs. You know, we do, the general fund does help keep that food service afloat, but what we did see is because all of our students ate, we had free lunch and free breakfast for the whole year. So our revenues will weigh up because we get federal reimbursement for all that. And because our participation was so high. So that was a good thing, and that's going to continue this year. So that, that helped. It is really good to see that. So the amount that we had to fund from our general fund was lower last year because again, because of that high participation really. It was such a small student population, it really is hard to break even, even, you know, in this. So I mean, these numbers look really good. Even our food service, cafe service is like, wow, you guys had a, you had a good year, you know, considering. So we'll continue, we should continue to see that. The next, the next two sheets of paper are just where our trust funds are, so where they ended the year. As you can see, and it is kind of funny because the special ed ended at zero because we rolled that into our general fund and then but the next, so that's 2021, 21, 22, you'll see that 184,000 plus the new, new 10,000 from what we voted going back into that account. So if you look at really the 21, 22 trust funds, where we are today approximately, those are, especially the facilities, that's a pretty healthy balance, I think. And because when we're looking at two big projects here at the elementary school and the high school, not sure where those numbers are going to come in, we might be able to use some of this money, you know, to help out with those. We do have one project still outstanding that we had voted last year, the windows. And I, it's just a supply issue getting those windows in. So we had $17,325 voted last year. We just haven't been able to get the, the product in. So that's the only thing that's still outstanding there. The last two sheets, school district profile, this is something that spits out of reports I sent to the state at the end of the year, the DOE 25 and the MS 25. So the first one is 2020, 21, the past year, and then the one, the other one is 219 and 2020, the prior year. What I like about this, it's number one, it tells me that, okay, everything's going into the right spot, you know, we're somewhat consistent. It shows dollars and percentages by the way the state classifies regular ed, special ed, vocational programs, other instructional programs, and so on. But at the top, you'll see cost per pupil. Now, this isn't the final number because the state, this was just based on the initial submission. But it's, it's got to be pretty close. So you see 2020, 21, 25,009. Last year, two years ago, is 26,4. So it actually went down because again, we did spend a little bit less last year. And we did have a little increase in our student population, not by much, but so again, this is just kind of a, a good breakout of where we spend our money in the classifications that the state looks at. And I think, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
For now. Yeah, and the last thing, and we'll get to that later, but we are starting the budget process for the 2022, 23 school year, but I think that's on the agenda.
Well, actually, my report is going through the agenda, so we can continue to go through the agenda and we'll add as we go, if you can see.
I just want to thank our staff right now, from our custodians to administrative assistants. They are working very, very hard in the classrooms, outside of the classrooms with their kids, and I just want to give them some appreciation. I think they're doing a wonderful job. I'd like, we had promoted Alma with the parents last week as far as like progress reports and so forth, and so far, so good. I haven't heard any feedback. I'm sure it looks like, just people know that we are kind of moving away from printed progress reports. So by the end of the semester, we're going to be totally online. So I encourage parents to update their emails and phones, phone numbers with us, please, because we will begin online, getting them access and making checks to information that way. You recall this summer, we had probably about 14 teachers participated, and that was something that kind of paralleled our strategic planning committee in that, in that we tried to come up with values, we're trying to figure out how, what, what is our score, or how do we do school as a district, and what does that kind of look like? And we're kind of working on, on goals and values. And again, it's going to parallel with Strategic Planning Committee, and she's actually in school today and tomorrow, working with teachers. And, you know, on community, common language, German classroom instruction, along with behaviors, things of that sort. She said something really interesting at our, our after-school staff meeting today, and she said, you know, when we look at things, we know there's a process, but it really is the process and not necessarily a product. And, and that really stood out to me because, you know, we can relate to it, I feel like I can, based on you know, current community issues and school performance. And, you know, so many people are product-driven that they forget about the learning that takes place along the way. And looking for each individual is to hardly grow, not necessarily what that product is. I grade or, you know, sculpture or garden or something that they produce, you know? So I just think that we need to be aware, and you know, those, those words keep resonating in my brain. And you know, we have to, when we, when we look at that final product, what we do is we take away from something that's really important that we value at our school, which is the individual student as well. So I, I think we need to be mindful when we talk about some of these things moving forward. And then some other stuff would be like the middle high school, we're both having dances this month, and the kids are excited about that. And we're also planning a wellness day for the middle high school students, which will be, I think it's supposed to be 21st, if I'm being correct. There are some issues though, but we're working those out. Also, the middle high school, Deb was talking about some programs that we're going to be offering. The middle high school is starting up their after-school program, activities starting next week. We will have busing for that. It's going to be Monday through Thursday from about 2:40 to 4:00 PM. We have several staff members that are going to facilitate this, and so far, we kind of polled their kids. I'm not polled teacher or parents or anything like that, but we have a good number of kids that are looking forward to using this service. And I think with the new hires that we have and people motivated to help out, I hope that this goes a long way for them. The elementary school during our last professional development day last week, they were continuing to do their work, with demonstrated success, so they're back in the building and and that in-service in, and they're also discussing that localized data and state data. And then I want to finally recognize the interact students for the services they provide. Mr. Dovolak. Mister Dovolak was looking to get something, a plaque in place for O'Brien's Way. I can't remember the gentleman's first name, but he was a, a war hero that passed away in, in World War Two. And he came and he told us his story about it and noted that when reaching out to our students, the students were more than happy to want to help him complete this mission, so to speak, for, for Mister O'Brien. And it was a wonderful story, and, and I just wanna give him recognition because the hearts that our kids have is, is incredible. It really is. I say that all the time when I talk to people, and I just feel like that's one of the things that we forget about when we're talking about student growth. You know, you're not, you're not looking at your volunteer hours, you're not looking at the dedication of the community. It's just a really, really incredible thing. So I wanted to thank them.
It was in Thomas F. O'Brien.
Thomas, that's it, yeah.
It's November fourteenth, I think, was the dedication.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that was presented at Rotary.
Is it whatever, is that a Sunday?
It's a Sunday.
Yeah. No, that's great.
Yeah, there's transportation report minutes are in there, and the facilities report is in there. Facilities report that's in there now was already reported on at the last meeting. Right.
No.
There was a brief meeting, Mark, just the bus that had. Okay, it's not necessary at this point, nor do we have a qualified driver to operate the bus. So just walking more, have the bus on property, maintenance lines, eight wise, it's the the department of the bus. Because it is new, newer.
Two thousand twelve, start that new.
When it has a value, it can trade it.
Yeah, yeah.
Then potentially look at trading it. Like we have that, that I more use because more people.
After talking to six, the other six now, I know I hate car dropping. So that's what I'm going to talk about.
That's what we did with the last one.
Yeah.
Yeah, to get another small room.
It didn't change like the transportation. Bus company works with us better now than they had. Is that the only transportation you're willing to commit?
We met C I T committee, you know, just that and that, coming up a little bit again. It's a work in process, really something of justice report, you know? We did. We went through a ton of policies and want to move a bunch to first reading. We didn't not get through the whole package of them because it was like six hundred. But we got through a ton of them, not, not, we don't want to move to the first reading, we want, we're gonna, we're recommending these, they get emails to board to be put on the first reading on the next meeting. So it's really about to be all, because we don't know what we're looking at, but there'll be a vote, there's a vote load coming, you ready?
That nomination, recommendation, resolution.
I have none.
That's very new.
Denise. Dennis.
Sorry. We had the five of the even agreement.
I actually went out and walked this, because looking at it with the sixty-four degrees, thirty-two minutes, fifty seconds, thirty feet, it's like, I couldn't put it, so I went out and walked it. Once you get out there, it makes sense. Yeah, I had to, because this was, I couldn't picture, even knowing the street, knowing where this, I couldn't picture this. But when I get out there, it makes sense.
So there was discussion at the last meeting that the plan would be essentially to empower the superintendent to approve it when we were satisfied with whatever conditions. Is that still?
Yeah, that would actually be the easiest way to do it, I believe.
Not just in your, on the memo, but
Yeah.
The proposal is right there, the motion, it's the bottom.
Joe was wondering about the cost. And you're good?
There's no way to really separate it. Now, yes, in part, I have them all over the team, but some of them weren't, but um
Right.
I mean, yes, I do still have an issue with like when you start activity, paying for people to profit, or like that. There's not enough there to, I'm gonna worry about it. The one thing I do have concern in that region itself doesn't specify the type of driveway they have to put in. So Pleasant Street was kind of downhill, but it's just a dirt driveway, it's gonna drain the street and everything. There's nothing specifically in there that knows that nothing has to do.
Oh, I get that.
The only concern that I have is what if it's just, obviously, I'm sure they're gonna pay, but there's nothing that says it has to. So if they sell the property somewhere down the road and all gets broken up, and you just wanna put dirt there, all of them drain down.
Right.
So it's just there'd be something in there to protect the people that say it has to be, it's a, it's a
That seems like, that would be what the town, what the plan was, isn't it?
Would the driveway permit, I think. Yeah, I think that would have to be, would the driveway permit? That would, that the town will have to give immaturity, and that'll have to be specified in that. I don't, not in this document, that'd be the next step. I get what you're saying, and I totally agree, which is trying to remember the top of my head, with the driveway, not applications, I could tell. And I'll double check on that for you.
So if say down the road, you are the compliance, that would be a town, wouldn't it?
Yeah, once this is, that's where I'm at, I think it's off our, it's off our, I wouldn't want to do that. Yeah, that would not be a maintenance issue for the school. That would be a maintenance issue for the town. The town has to maintain there, right, and up there, turn around.
So, so technically, it would have to be, then.
The town would have to, has to maintain their right of way. Their, their turn around, they have to have their right of way. But they're not gonna issue anybody a driveway permit, you know, making sure that it's not gonna impact their
That, that's my concern.
Yeah.
So the town will pay for it.
Oh, absolutely. That would have to be on the town, not the school.
Now, after all is said and done, do we still own that principal?
We're still on it.
Definitely.
Absolutely. And if
We're not giving more of a
If someday the school sells this piece of land to Joe Schmoll, Joe Schmoll's gonna protect it on that. For the jump from that, but
So that is gonna be, is it a town? Different from when you were just talking about it.
Correct, but that's, it, it, but that matters to time for here. This matters to time for it, okay? Yeah, it matches it. The town can't give her driveway permit until she has an easement. We can't give her a driveway permit on to somebody else's. Right, because it is school land. We have an easement, oh, the town has an easement over the land, but we, she didn't.
So this is saying that they, they need to, the driveway, so the town has to
Correct. Did you understand all that? No.
I'm not hearing it well either. Thank you.
That's okay. I, I saw you, you are the concerned party. Do you mind, Dan?
No.
We're just talking about how Joe was concerned with constructing a driveway and having impact on the town's turnaround. Well, that doesn't need to be in this deed. Any impact on the driveway construction would be determined with the driveway permit. Which is the town, not the school.
Right.
So we were just clarifying that, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
And from here on in, if this has to be, even have to be approved by the school permit, correct?
That's what we're gonna do tonight. We're either gonna approve it or not approve it, correct?
Yeah, so tonight, tonight's vote, the proposed motion, the language of the proposed motion is essentially being to inform the town, the district, and the school board, approve the draft easement deed and authorize superintendent to execute the deed as soon as the town grants driveway permit to the grantee, with all costs of reporting paid by the grantee. So essentially, once the town, once you have a meeting in order with the town, and they've granted you the permit, the superintendent, if, if approved by the board, the superintendent would be empowered to sign the easement so that you have both approval from the board and approval from the town, that it's up to, to construct the driveway.
I believe I have approval from the town.
Verbal, yeah.
That's waiting on the school.
So I guess if there's no person that's definitely on the board on that, I will accept the motion.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, I think that's something, it's only to unload that property, which ends at the end of this year. It's not gonna plan on doing anything on
That's been extended. They've just extended that in last month. It's been extended, so the time crunch is off a little, but it's still pertinent to get it done, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess I will I'll accept the motion to inform the town, the district, and the school board, approve the draft deed, see and authorize superintendent to execute deed as soon as the town grants the driveway permit to the grantee, with all costs of reporting paid by the grantee.
Or make a motion.
If you ever, and, and Brian, are there any further discussions on that motion?
I, I just want, one piece of caution, and I know that we've gone around and around about this. I don't believe the town, I'm, I'm almost positive, can legally grant her driveway permit until she has the right of way, the easement. And we, we've gone over this a thousand times. You can do it this way, but I caution that it may come back, and we may need to revoke, that's all.
So that's, this was the suggestion of
The school attorney. And the town's attorney says differently.
Well, I think we, I mean, I'm comfortable following the I T advice of our
Absolutely, absolutely. I just caution you, it may come back, that's all. Just so you're aware. Hopefully, we can last on hold if it's not, however, it may.
Talk recorded, we were approving the motion that includes the requirement that it costs if they were recording the would be paid by the attorney. So I have, that, I don't think needs to be, excuse me. That's just for the property, your, your, that's I think the full scope would be, outlined by So this does kind of, we use that, it does have to be. Yeah, and I think, well, we still mentioned last time we discussed this was recording the movement, it's sort of, it will be up to the attorney. If she chooses not to do that, then she doesn't have to do it, and that's on her, so we, we, we're not gonna do anything after this. But if then you're down the road, it hasn't been recorded, because someone, you know, someone recorded, then, you know, that's not a formal issue, then, you know, there's a, we'll sort it out on
So the town has to record that, you're saying?
No, you, so you would be responsible for, for making sure that the deed was recorded at the registry, the thing that is associated with registry.
And when can I do that?
Well, as soon as it's written. So we're gonna be basically authorizing, or the motion is to authorize superintendent to approve that once the, the permit has been granted by the town. And so as soon as you have the sign from the district, you can bring that over to the registry to formally register.
But I have the okay from the town, I need the okay from you, and then I go to the registry.
Right, you have to, correct.
Correct. I do have the okay from the town.
Well, once you have the physical driveway permit, you have to bring that permit to the school, and then they will execute the agreement. But you need the physical driveway permit. You need to do that paperwork with the town first.
Even if I don't wanna put a driveway in right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You need the permit.
Because if you don't, if you don't get the permit, then, then the superintendent will be able to approve the deed.
Which even before that, to confuse it even more, you need to get the, you need to divide that property first. The town's not gonna give you the driveway permit, so the property is divided.
How long does that last for, that, that was coming?
There is a life inspection town, but I'm not sure what it is. I'm not sure. You have to, if you call Carol tomorrow, she can let you know. Call the town tomorrow, she'll let you know.
So motion on the table, to, to the sort of power of the superintendent to sign off, but how, is there any further discussion on the motions? There are none, all those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
All those opposed, admitted, and in session, and that motion there. So as soon as the attorney brings the approved driveway permit to, again, she has permission of the district to sign off on that one.
Okay, thank you.
I put in a packet, this is more educational. The state. Yeah. So the state adequacy, state education funding, including the adequacy grants. And I think we've reviewed this before. This is the most updated numbers. It's a very big spreadsheet. I can go through the spreadsheet with you. The, the biggest thing is you wanna find Lincoln and, and Woodstock on this sheet. And as we know, so they, there's a formula for state education funding. They calculate the cost of an adequate education based on the state's definition of an adequate education. And then they throw in some the ability of each town to raise the amount that the, that is determined, like the town of Lincoln, the amount that it's determined for adequate education for the students in the town of Lincoln. You apply the tax, the state education, statewide education tax rate. And what happens in Lincoln is, when you apply that to Lincoln's property valuation, because it's so high, that is more. So Lincoln has the ability to raise more taxes based on that state educate, statewide education property tax rate than the state says is the cost of an adequate education for the students in Lincoln. So what that means is Lincoln doesn't get any money. Okay, it used to be Lincoln was a donor town, but those have gone away. Woodstock, on the other hand, again, when you run those numbers, here's what it costs to, for state, adequate education for students in Woodstock. Based on the formula, when you run the numbers, Woodstock can't raise enough money to meet that adequate education for the students in Lincoln, Woodstock. So Woodstock gets a little bit of a adequacy grant, which goes to offset their taxes. So again, Lincoln doesn't gain anything. If you look at the column, on the last page, you look at Woodstock, because again, it's like, kind of like two pages for this whole calculation for each town. So Woodstock gets currently three hundred and thirty, if you go all the way over to preliminary and final grant, adequacy grant, Woodstock's getting three hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars for the adequacy grant, where again, if you look at that same column from Lincoln, it would be zero. So again, the, the formula really hasn't changed. They've changed. They've added some stabilization money. They've added different things throughout the years, but they've added some stabilization money. They've added different things throughout the years, but we've seen, this is pretty much how it is for Lincoln and Woodstock, um, for the adequacy grants. There's always, this is always up for discussion in the state, as you know. But if you have any specific questions, we can, I can walk through the whole formula with you. Um, I think we gave you the information on how the formula works in the state right up, so. If there's any questions, just let us know. Yeah, there's a lot. Yeah. Yeah.
And there's a lot of stuff, I know they said some rumblings, kind of, about different funding schemes and whatnot, if there's any, have you heard in the state about any changes that have happened?
I have not, and actually Bonnie's here. I don't know if Bonnie has heard anything, but, um, nothing that's gonna, yeah, nothing that's gonna affect our towns at this point, but. Yeah, not yet.
Twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
Yes, the, um, budget process has begun. Teachers have gotten their notices, and so they're doing their budgets now. And by the end of October, they will be, uh, presenting their budgets to administrative team, and then we will be reviewing the budgets for the month of November. So by the end of November, you will get a proposed budget from the administration. The only thing I was wondering is if the board would be, um, looking, is the board looking at, and you have any thoughts of looking at, what are your limits? What do you, what do you think that this budget should look like, or, or anything like that, for guidance? Sometimes you've given us a clue, you know, what you're looking at, but, you know, a direction. I mean, sometimes you don't. I just didn't know if you wanted to do that, or just let us move forward, and then you'll look at it after. So, if you wanna, what you wanna do.
We typically get first draft and then-
Look at it. Let's find them.
We go by, we run it line by line, yeah, with, with rename, and, yeah.
Justification. Presentation.
Presentation. Folks who have special moments planned.
You do, oops, I'm sorry. Um, you do have two, um, budget workshop sessions in December, and that's when we usually present the budget. Um, I didn't know if you wanted to, want me to extend indication to the, to select boards? Okay.
Those are typically over the public, you know, anyone who's interested in that topic, work with them. If they have, you know, some focus. It's not, it's not a public, uh, such that as publication, but it's, you know, it's a, that's a, you know, that's a where the money's going, and what's, what's, what's happening. And so, you said in November, which is how it-
Usually by Thanksgiving, that week, Thanksgiving, we try to-
Get them out there.
Get them out, yes. So there's time to look at them before we start in December.
And you also have a schedule, a ten day schedule? December first.
Does the administration have any thoughts or ideas, suggestions on where you want the budget to be? Not yet?
Not yet. Not yet.
So, uh, is this, this is sort of the standard schedule, um, session, you know, here. You know, it may, you may want to plan on, because of the, the, um, sort of the front here, that the board won't be fully evaluating the budget, that it may be, that they're to have a, maybe a whole session.
Yeah.
We'll be, obviously, the schedule is still flexible on that.
Right, definitely, yeah. It's, it's built in, you know, so that you can continue.
Senator Lovey?
That's it.
Looking at the March fifteenth date for the school discipline, and that's literally right on there. Yeah. That's, exactly.
So, uh, permanent due?
I have status quo on that.
Okay.
Strategic plan. We are now setting up meetings. Remember, we did the, uh, we did, got all the information from the, um, commit, community, and we did, um, merge all those, um, pieces together, and now we're going to, um, have a definite document to go by, and then, then we're setting up a meeting for the committee to look at.
So they, what am I, draft?
Draft, right. Um, next week, we'll be meeting with, um, Mark Don to go over the data. And then the committee will get together and formulate enough, you know, move forward with the plan. It's because Mark Don will be the one that will be running that.
Uh, I said, I'm going to cover that. Hey, student visitation? You got a couple of students back there? The ones.
Hi, everyone.
That?
All right.
Okay. Yeah. And, uh, community. Okay. Okay, if you don't mind, just coming up to the odd shape device here for the-
End of the table there.
Right, I know. I have a copy of that, when I was in, I'm not allowed on, on, uh, artifacts.
My kids have acted better than I thought they would, so.
I'm gonna go sit with Alan, and we'll talk.
Uh, so, good evening. My name is Kaylee Ham. For those of you who don't know me, um, I'm here today as a concerned resident of the district in regards to my experience as a parent of a child with a disability. Um, I'd like to practice this by telling you kind of my background education. Um, I have my, uh, P-35 elementary certification with my bachelor's degrees, and I'm also certified in middle school history. I have my, uh, K-12 master in special education. I'm also certified autism specialist, and I'm currently on path to graduating the hall uh, with my EDA degree, my applied behavior, um, analysis. I've become a certified BCBA, a board certified behavior analyst. Uh, so I can certainly tell I'm somebody who's a highly qualified and experienced, uh, in the field of education. Uh, my son is currently in kindergarten here at Linwood. Um, I have had several struggles getting appropriate services for my child during his enrollment in this district. Uh, and there have been instances where I absolutely could have sought, who processed, and then mentioned that to the staff that I was working with in order to get contingency services. And obviously, that's not what I, what I want to do. Um, I am concerned about the liability that I've seen from the special education department, uh, and the liability of courses to the district. Um, and I'm also extremely angered by the fact that if I was not knowledgeable in my field, uh, there were multiple instances where my child, if not, got the services he needs, and then, for high mistakes, I am not a provider, two examples. Uh, the first, I provided you a copy of an email exchange, uh, from an incident dated April twenty-first, twenty-one. Uh, at the time, Thorn was enrolled at the childcare center, and he had a one-to-one para. Um, I heard from his preschool teacher, uh, not from the school itself, but from his preschool teacher, that he couldn't go to school the week of April vacation, uh, because the school would not be providing him a para. Uh, so I sent an email, uh, inquiring, and the response I got was, and I quote, "Ask for the teacher's email about T's attendance at the center during vacation week." Unfortunately, uh, rehabilitative support, which is the word we use for a para, for T is tied to the school calendar, so we will not have someone at the center for him. Uh, the response I wrote was, and I quote, "Unfortunately, I have to disagree with you. Uh, Thorn does not attend Linwood, and therefore does not follow that academic calendar. His services follow the calendar of his current placement at the childcare center. Thorn has school next week, and therefore, I, uh, therefore, I expect his services to be provided." Uh, the response was that the one-to-one para services in the IEP, and I quote, "Does not include school vacations such as February and April, and the center is willing to pay for someone to come during preschool hours, and the school district will give them a name of people to call." Um, so this email exchange, at this point, has already gone further than I feel like the average parent would have gone, having taken the school at their word, that they would send somebody. Um, I received this email while I was driving, uh, so I pulled over into a parking lot. I've never worked with little, like, tiny children, I was in a high school for many, many years, uh, so I'm not super familiar, but I know. Like, I know that this is a thing. So it took me a lesson, five-minute Google search, uh, to provide the information from my following email, which I advise, and I quote, according to RSA one-eighty-eight dash C, section fifteen, for a preschool student, the length of the school year not governed by the school district's calendar. I included a picture of the RSA for good reference. I expect Thorn to be receiving services next week if his placement is not on vacation. Uh, I should know that this email exchange happened on Friday for vacation. So if his preschool teacher had not told me, I would have not known that he couldn't have school the following week. Uh, immediately, I got an email back that said, oh, of course, we'll send somebody, and he had somebody that week. Uh, but this is a huge liability for the school, and I major to service two that child. Uh, because if I had not pushed, he would have missed out on a whole week of school simply because the school would not send his para during a time of leadership hell. Uh, the second incident happened recently, the Thursday before the first day of school. I was at work. I received an unplanned phone call, uh, from the special education director and his special education teacher, uh, asking if I had a minute to talk, uh, in which they wanted to discuss the upcoming school year, and wanted to place him in the partner program. Uh, the, you, the, from a special education perspective, this is a T, and we're talking about change. It should have been, uh, something, you know, the spring on a parrot, uh, Thursday at two-thirty in the afternoon, uh, to say, hey, we really think this is a good idea. Uh, and I've never been provided a program description, a program outline, and outline of the curriculum. Uh, there was a talk about that. Uh, as a parent, I was asked to change my child's placement with no knowledge and no formal T meeting. Any placement changes required by law, i.e. PT and meeting. I definitely felt like it was kind of a gang-up surprise. Uh, they were requiring if I had no information, would place him in a program that he just simply does not qualify for. Um, I provided you resources from the Milton Public School District, the Franklin Public School District, and the NECC, who is who Linwood contracts the services through, all advising that it is specifically an autism program, and my child would not have an autism diagnosis. Um, and I highlighted all of these parts, including the, the mission statement for the NECC, which is simply the state, that it is an autism program. Uh, my child is not diagnosed with autism, so I don't have a possibility. Uh, I urge this board to review the special education department within the buildings, not only because of the legal liability it poses to the district, uh, but more importantly, because the special ed students don't have mothers who are knowledgeable in laws and processes. Um, and I, and I feel like, and I've had discussions with people, and I feel like there are many students who are not getting the services they deserve, and are, and are, uh- Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Any other, uh, public comments?
Mine, all for one. And just in response to, uh, Judy's, um, letter that she, uh, gave me, I want to thank her for that, it was pretty thorough. And it did update me, uh, on some of the curriculum that's going on. And I, and I would, uh, endorse the idea of doing order report, help to the community. And, uh, I would suggest that we do that as soon as possible in response to the letters out there in Woodstock, and also to Lincoln. And further, I, I suggest that the, uh, data overview from the last school year be included in that report, because it really outlines a lot of the changes we're making in the curriculum, especially having to do with, um, the new math curriculum and the science curriculum. And, uh, I would just make some changes to put some of those analytical notes that the principal made in there, so everyone has a good baseline, especially coming into the new, uh, scores that are gonna be coming down the road here. And, um, also, part of that report, I mean, I hope we outline a little bit of this coming to be in it, but I would also like to see, um, for example, one of the things that was brought up, that Adam didn't mention recently, is, um, for example, the ELA writing scores for, um, uh, three through five were, and actually, six or seven, is almost a hundred percent, which is, you know, excellent. Uh, but it, uh, the reading is, 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 like, for fifth grade, it's, it's down around twenty-five percent. And those two things don't really correlate well, which was brought up in those meetings. And things like that, I think, you know, would really get parents, at least some hope that maybe they need writing scores and translating those reading scores, or, or where that mismatch is, because one hundred percent, twenty-five percent, reading and writing, I, you know, in a doldoily, I'm an educator, but I think it's pretty related. Okay.
Any other public comments?
Yeah, someone, uh, talking about me, uh, again, I'm still looking for information on the masks. Uh, tonight, you said COVID-nineteen is status quo. I'm still looking for the data behind what status quo is. Uh, I'm also curious what the exit plan is. Uh, I haven't seen an exit plan. When are we getting out of this? Is there a, what, what is your cutoff? Where is the exit to get out of it, when you stop putting masks on our kids? Um, again, I keep going around our community, going out to dinner, the cooks aren't wearing masks. Waitresses aren't wearing masks. It's not mandated by the state. It's not mandated, uh, anywhere except for on our children. The only place to wear masks right now. Um, if you want the kids to wear masks, great, but you should allow those that don't want the kids to wear masks also. And that's what's going on everywhere else, is mask choice. Uh, so I'm just curious, still looking for the stats behind why we wear masks and what the exit plan is. When does it stop? Well, this is emersal. I mean, we, there are treatments now. Hopefully, you're reading every day. There are treatments to help the program. The EU canceled vaccines. Right? There's no more vaccines over there, because there are treatments. Masks should come down. They are detrimental to our kids' health, and they are detrimental to our kids' learning. But please, find an exit plan, and I'd love to see the statistics why we're staying status quo. Thanks. Thank you. Uh, fun?
Yes, yes, I said earlier, not yet. Um, basically, the committees are working on the retained bills. Haven't even decided how they're gonna recommend them to come out of committee. Um, eight-hundred-and-twelve bills have been introduced. They're not even all done to be signed off on yet. So, right now, and, and we start in, uh, January, pretty much in earnest, so right now, there's very little information. But if you want, I will keep you posted. You'd like me to. I will, uh, alert you of anything that's going to affect us as we go along. It'll be, don't worry, Mark, if we really know much. Unfortunately, it, you get that far in the process, so you kind of, before you have an idea of how things are going.
I think it'd be great if we keep an eye on it.
I will, thank you. I definitely will.
Appreciate the offer. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I will-
I've got one thing.
Um, the opening committee wanted to have the survey sent out, and you guys never made a motion to have the survey. I was just wondering what you're gonna do to the parents. I know, uh, Tammy Ham said that we break the coolie, and you're afraid to have the survey go out, but I think it's parents. We get to make that decision. So I just wondered, for that, there, you guys never did anything on that.
Thank you. Final, I think, question, Peter?
Are we going to, uh, not bother?
We are having a non-meeting?
Non-meeting.
Non-meeting. Something we're doing, uh, time travel. Doesn't seem to be anywhere, people that can, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
On the three, you're doing it.
And we're gonna, we're gonna move it into the elementary office, just because it's more accessible, maybe, um, but it'll be out there. It'll be out, uh, till Thanksgiving, I think, we said we'd have it available.
So maybe, when I can pick up the kids now, come, come in, it's early. Cool. I just, I, one thing, if you don't mind. Um, the communication, I, I'm still a little, um, aggravated about. We had a- We had a COVID case in school three weeks ago. It was right after our last meeting, I believe. My granddaughter was called, her her mother, I should say, that she was in that, no, in her, I don't give too much away. Anyway, parents were notified that there was an active case in school. Immediately, my phone rings and I'm clueless, absolutely clueless. Now, parents get it all off. The school board is not notified and the school board is who all everybody calls immediately. They pick up the phone. I don't know about the rest of you, but I get calls all the time about things at school. There was also, police were called to the school for an incident, an issue that all of a sudden my phone rang and I'm like, no idea. And well, I'm on the school board. It's it's I would appreciate if the school board was notified when there were pertinent things going on. The police being called to the school is huge. Every parent, I was like, why are the police at the school and my kid's safe? And I'm have to say, I have no idea. It's all different in its office. And and there's an active COVID case and they all know who it is, what it was. And I can't, even if I did know, which I wouldn't want to know, I just want to know that there is an active case because you get all these different parents that, well, you know, little Johnny has an issue, should I send him? No, you need, you know, it's and I always refer them to the superintendent, but it's it's really difficult being blindsided by the parents that call all the time about different things. And I would really like, again, to request that when something comes up, something pertinent that you think that this some school board members may get a phone call about, we'd like a heads up, whether it's a quick text, which doesn't take much effort, or a quick email, no details. I don't want to know who, I don't want to know where, I don't want to know, I just that police were called, students were safe, you know, the parents found out, so I'll call. But that was after I had had several phone calls from parents. Three, before I found out what was going on, three different parents, and I had to say, I have no idea. So it's I just like to, as a board member, be informed before parents start calling about things like that. Not that I'm gonna answer any of their questions because legally I can't. However, at least I'm not. Well, what are you talking about? Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I can I talk to the secretary?
No.
Okay. I guess to bring up one way to, the police were called to the school, and I don't know the whole thing. Why does the administration think it's not important to notify the board when the board is the administrator's employee? I sat there for eight years and I know exactly.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Let's go. I just think the lack of all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. And that's there. And here.